We'll now call the order, the May 18th Special Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Mugar?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Peschall?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Mayor Palmieri?
Here.
Present seven.
All right. Move right into new ordinance 20-208. Create ordinance to provide for COVID-19 temporary outdoor seating areas and authorize city staff review and approval of temporary outdoor seating areas and expansion of licensed premises for taverns and restaurants. Staff recommends to waive the rules and adopt on first reading. Did we have any comments come in?
There are no comments.
All right, back to council for motion in a second.
I move we waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
Second.
Any discussion on waiving the rules? All right, please call the roll.
Mugar?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And back to the ordinance 20-208.
So moved. Second.
A discussion on creation of the ordinance. Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you. So question for staff maybe. So just wondering, as these permits get approved by city staff or maybe denied, can it be possible for either neighbors around that business or and/or council members to be notified as those permits are approved so that we can kind of keep track in case complaints come in, we get that first?
Do you want me to take that or?
Sure.
Mr. Davis and City Attorney Lawrenson and I talked about it before the meeting. What we thought might be a good thing to do so that everybody would have access to it is to put those documents on our website and make them accessible so that because these might be coming in over the course of the summer and then you'll always know which little place you can just click and go to. So we think it's probably the best way to do it. It might be impractical to notify people about this, but we certainly want to have access to that information. So I appreciate that suggestion there. I think you had another one though.
Yeah, so and maybe after, so it looks like these would expire on October 1st, correct?
That's the intent, yes.
Just wondering if there's, if we could have some sort of like after-action report, evaluation, just to know how this went for all the partners involved, neighbors, businesses, just in case this were to come up again.
I think it's appropriate that we can do an after-action evaluation report and as time goes on, we're going to be monitoring these. You know, to the degree we get a complaint, we may have to investigate it and make sure that we've thought through everything because there, you know, there are going to be so many different circumstances we really can't think of. Hopefully staff will address them because staff members, Mr. Davis, I think your intent is for staff members to, a staff member to visit onsite with every applicant.
Only if requested. Right now, we've arranged it so it could all be done digitally, virtually if we need to, but certainly if anybody asks us, we'll always meet people out onsite. Whether they have questions or clarifications, we're happy to do that.
And councilmember?
No, no, I thought Madam.
Mugar?
Actually, I was just going to ask Mr. Davis, for those at home, to give an explanation for those at home, it's always nice. We get to read it, but they don't always get to. Just tell them what we're doing, why we're doing it so quickly and how we're hoping it'll help.
My thoughts.
Sure. We're looking at creating what we call a COVID-19 temporary use permit. This is to allow outdoor seating at establishments for eating and drinking. Oftentimes, some of those establishments have little patios or decks. At this point in time, we're expecting the interest in those to expand. Some of them might want to expand what they already have, some don't have that and would like to expand that. And so on the private property, we'd create a TUP, a temporary use permit. That would follow a process. If they want to go in the city right of way, we still have the sidewalk cafe permit, so they can still do either one or both. With the temporary use permit, it takes an ordinance change, so that's why it's a council. The sidewalk cafes are already set up for those to be administered. The temporary use permits on private property are to show us how they're going to control their patrons so that oftentimes a liquor license is going to go along with that, so there's going to be fencing requirements, there's going to be monitoring of who's doing what where and how the alcohol gets dispensed. We'll also want to make sure they cover the parking requirements. The occupancy is met for the entire facility because that's limited by fire code and building code, so we'll be looking at that. The health department will be looking at making sure that the spacing they have for tables and bars all meets the recommendations of the CDC and all the other state and local recommendations. Let's see, and no music on the outside of the building.
Mr. Davis, I just want to ask about, there's a part in the staff memo that talks about expansion, not just of the space, but of the service, that temporary bars might also be set up in their side, front, and rear yards, parking lots, or even neighbors' property?
Yes.
How does that fit in here? Because that's not just expanding the space, that's expanding the capacity for service. And we, as council, received an email earlier this afternoon from Rethink with some concerns about the expanded access for alcohol in general. Do you see the temporary bar setup as an exception to the rule or do you see that as a number of these places will be asking for additional bars?
They'll be, I'm not sure I can predict how often that will happen, but we've made provisions for that to be allowed under certain circumstances, as long as it has to be staffed. The health department would prefer if a bartender dispensed it to waitstaff and then the waitstaff served it at the tables, but in some of those cases where the waitstaff isn't available, the bartender would be responsible for, I'd say, policing the social distancing for people to stand in line at the bar to pick up their drink order themselves. So it's probably, there's going to be some people asking for that type of service and may or may not be able to provide two people to both dispense and then serve. And worst-case scenario, the bartender will have to do both.
So why would we need to allow additional bars? I'm trying to understand that.
Ah. I think, well, it looks like there's a law enforcement answer to it. I think just from a practical standpoint, we want to minimize the number of interactions we have and if people have to walk back into the bar in some cases, that might just create more conflict points and we're trying to minimize those, there might be a law enforcement practical side to it as well.
One of the, in discussion of trying to work through this particular helper, if you will, for businesses, one of the provisions that we talked about was having the opportunity for employees to monitor what's going on on the outside. And if a business has limited staffing and the server has to go from outside to inside, then there's nobody outside to monitor what's going on. And throughout the summer, it may be a little known fact, we do compliance checks of all of our licenses. We send folks in to make sure they're following all the alcohol laws. We send folks in that are underage and they check out the locations for us under the supervision of a police officer and we deliver citations when anybody violates their alcohol license. And we could also incorporate what they're doing at their outdoor bar permits in order to facilitate this, to try to help our businesses.
So it sounds like this would help with that by having an employee out there. Would those temporary bars be somehow roped off so that you don't have people like kind of congregating en masse around them?
Are they yours?
Yes. At this point in time, we're asking for all that information in their application. They have to give us a site plan to show us how that's going to work out. Probably depends on what kind of capacity they're talking about for the outdoor consumption area. If it's probably one or two tables, it's not going to be that big a deal, but if there's 30, they probably will have to identify how they're, put the social distance stickers on the ground to keep people in line, kind of like at McDonald's.
And then my last question is just related to, we want to help these businesses do what they need to do and we want to try and get these permits to them quickly. It says within two to three days of the application?
Yes.
And I'm assuming the assumption is that that would be prior to Memorial Day, but then if there was non-compliance or a reason for revocation, how does that work and can you explain the appeal process?
Yes, that, and the ordinance identifies the process for revocation and appeals. Minimum, I believe, was three days for a revocation and I might ask the city attorney to chime in on the rest of it since she was instrumental in drafting that.
So the revocation process anticipates that you would have a complaint either from somebody in the public or perhaps it could be law enforcement who said, "We noticed there's this violation occurring." Then the complaint would first go to Director Davis to review. He would set a notice of hearing because again, you're dealing with the liquor license in particular that goes along, it's kind of a tag along to the temporary use permit in this case. He would give notice no less than three days out to give that person an opportunity to respond. So it would be a fairly quick opportunity for a hearing. It could be up to 10 days, but no less than three days. Then he issues his decision, there's a timeline in there for appeal if somebody wants to take it further up to the council.
So then this only affects the TUP, the revocation. It does not tag along with their liquor license, or does it?
The liquor license would, if the TUP is revoked, the liquor license would contract again.
Okay.
So that the automatically, and there's language in the application where the applicant certifies that they understand that, that the liquor license expanded area goes along with that temporary use permit. If there would be something that would revoke their full liquor license in addition, then we go through the full statutory process that some of you, but not all of you, have been through where you would have to bring a complaint and that comes before the council for basically a trial on that.
Councilmember Crowsey?
In your guise's background, it says that temporary bars could be set up even in neighbors' properties. Would it need to be a retail neighbor or could it be set up in a residential backyard? Because I mean, there's plenty of buyers in town that are bumped right to residential.
You are correct and that's our concern about that. Yes, it could be, but we have to get that owner's approval.
What about surrounding neighbors?
Surrounding neighbors don't have to sign off on that. That would have to be based on the judgment of the, all the review team for that project.
Because I know as a citizen, I would hate to have people in my backyard five feet away eating a meal.
Oh, yes.
Well, that's why we have to exercise some discretion ourselves and if we say no, they can appeal it to council and part of our message will be, well, then you bring it to council, then the neighbors will come.
Sure.
And all that, so the appeal process, we're trying to get them to understand that there are some common sense things we have to follow and if we have somebody basically in your backyard, that's not very courteous, so that, we're going to be discouraging that type of behavior, but if they want to kick it to council and have you tell them no, we're okay with that.
Sounds like a plan.
And I guess the other question is, so there were some concern here in the last several days about some of the surrounding states or areas that are not reopened and some of their residents coming across the state line to partake. And I kind of compare this to dry counties and wet counties down south where you have those who jump the line and do we have any thoughts about whether this could potentially attract more people from outside the state or other areas that are not doing this kind of reopening and how would we respond to that if that were the case? I know we've seen a number of, it's that time of year when we start to see folks coming north, so.
I think that's probably more a discussion item for number three. I don't think this accommodation is necessarily going to go there, but I think the larger issue is, you know, can what's been happening here the past week to 10 days, can that, can that create the circumstances you're talking about? I would say yeah, I would agree with you. I don't think this necessarily does it, we're just trying to make it work for our own folks because capacity issues are going to be, if they truly want to comply with social distancing, they're going to need tools like this. If they want to ignore social distancing, they don't need this ordinance, they're going to pack them shoulder to shoulder and
Sure.
Violate every good common sense, public health recommendation that Mr. Geren and his staff are putting out there. And they may very well do that and there may be people from other states that say, "Oh, I love that," but that's, it's probably more for number three. That's my take.
I guess one technical question for city attorney then too, because a lot of businesses are trying to support each other and do these package deals, you know, with the restaurants and the alcohol and that kind of thing. Is there a scenario in which one business could apply but use another business's physical space or does it have to be that parcel owner applying? I'm not sure if I articulated that well.
If you're using another business entity's space, you will have to show that you have permission and that they will have to sign off on that as well.
Okay. So you would have both businesses sign the application in that scenario?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Ford?
Is there a fee for businesses to apply for this?
No, there is not.
Thank you.
Did you have anything? Anyone else, any further discussion? All right, please take the roll.
Mugar?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have new resolution 20-209. Resolution for a safe reopening of the Oshkosh economy. Did we have any comments come in on this item?
There was no comments.
All right, back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, so last week, I think, gave us all, in my opinion, a bit of whiplash. We got mixed messages from state and local government and I think that, in my opinion, erodes trust in government. So the intent of this resolution is to demonstrate unity of purpose from this body based on the reality that we face. So what is that reality? Well, the statewide order was struck down. We can't do anything about that. The city of Oshkosh is under the jurisdiction of the county health department, so we can't do anything about that. We can certainly ask questions and we'll do that with the next item. What we can do, in my opinion, is reject this, reject this false choice that we either have to be for the economy or for public health. If we frame it that way, it's going to lead to either economic disaster or a public health disaster. And I think this needs to be about people, not about politics. So what's in this resolution? Well, we recognize the public health emergency. We recognize the economic hardship that our residents and our businesses are facing right now. We recognize the guidance of the WEDC for industry-specific reopening, reopening recommendations that are included in the county's recommendations. We recognize the work of the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce in their, I want to get the name right, return to work best practices that are based in part on CDC guidelines. We recognize the Wisconsin Restaurant Promise that was brought to us at our last council meeting. And finally, we endorse a safe and fair reopening of the Oshkosh economy based on local COVID-19 conditions. Now, I'm not naive, this body is going to disagree on specific policies during this crisis. I think as a democratic body, we should disagree on the specifics and I think that is okay, but I want to assure Oshkosh residents and businesses that we are unified in our purpose, that we want to work together to deal with this unprecedented crisis. That's our commitment to you. So thank you to my fellow councilmembers for considering this.
Councilmember Ford, at the end of this resolution, we say that while we endorse a safe and fair reopening of our Oshkosh economy, we will provide assistance, both financial and otherwise, wherever feasible. What financial assistance do you foresee?
Yeah, well, I think the previous discussion about not having fees, for example, for these temporary use permits, the loan programs through the GoEDC, our reduction in liquor licenses for businesses that were impacted by that, I think that is the spirit of, the spirit of the financial support that I'm referencing.
So more of a fee relief?
Correct, for us to be able to take, take action to support our local businesses where we can, when we can.
Certainly.
Other councilmembers discussion? Councilmember Mugar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank Councilmember Ford for authoring this and putting this together and even beyond that, you know, barely a month in, reaching out to the chamber and having several conversations with them, I know sometimes it seems, it seemed like I was in the minority at some points in regards to our relationship with the chamber. And so I find it encouraging that councilmembers are reaching out, trying to get their, their take on the issues and how it affects the business community and just their thoughts. So I'm thankful for your working with them on trying to put something together that, while it may just be a bit symbolic, that definitely shows our resolve in trying to help them and just, you know, we've got their backs. We're trying, keep doing your thing, keep doing it safely as best as possible and we're going to be here to support you as best as possible. So I want to thank you for, for authoring it. I fully support what you've got here with no additions or subtractions. I think, I think it shows that, that we're here for them and we expect them to operate in a safe and responsible manner and we'll support them where we can.
So before we take the vote, I just wanted to ask if all councilmembers had the opportunity to read the email that came from Rethink and their request for additional provisions?
No.
No? It came this afternoon, Wisconsin County Drug and Alcohol Coalition. They were very appreciative. I reached out to the email sender, Samantha Hilker. The letter was authored by Paul Spiegel. They did ask that in addition, they respectfully requested, "We consider requiring patrons to enter and exit through the main entrance, not directly from the street."
I think you may be confused, Madam Mayor, that was for the last resolution 208, not this one.
Absolutely, you are right.
Happy to answer those questions. At your, why don't we, when we get to the next item, that's kind of the wild card round, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Okay.
I thought you were cool with them, I'm sorry, I should have asked.
No, I just didn't know if everybody got a chance to see them because they kind of came in late this afternoon. All right, so let's go ahead and call the roll on 209.
Mugar?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have council discussion on local regulations as a result of the Supreme Court decision striking down statewide safer at home order. And we do have County Health Director Doug Geren here also to answer questions. I don't think we had any emails that came in specific to this.
Correct. I didn't have any.
Madam Mayor, I just suggested Mr. Geren on a couple of recommendations from council to ask him to be here and graciously accepted. So while Doug's coming up, I'll try to answer some of your questions, so we'll keep the, there were several things that were brought up there. Do you want to ask him or?
Go ahead.
Okay. The temporary expansion include enforceable start and end dates. I believe the ordinance, because it said specifically October 1 addresses that issue.
Yes.
The holders have an outdoor barrier. We're going to try to have some natural barriers, but I'm going to, I have to defer to Mr. Davis and his staff to figure out practical ways to create those barriers. That's a legitimate concern that they raise and we, we don't want this to become a place where the rules have loosened up and I think the chief would agree with that as well. Not allowing for the current indoor max to be expanded, that's not going to happen. What we're trying to do is prevent, or to get them a little higher up because we can't tell you exactly what we're going to get in terms of reduction with, if everybody is truly following social distancing, but getting a 33% capacity might be a good outcome. So if we can get some more added up outside, we'll never get close. From a practical standpoint, we'll never get up to their maximum capacity. And then no smoking signage, we can talk to them about that, but that's, that's something that we can, we've dealt with, with our outdoor bars as well. Required a patron to enter and exit through the main entrance. I'm not sure how that's going to work. I've tried to resolve some of those, I don't know if we can do all of those, but we'll try. That's certainly a legitimate way to do it. And then not be tied in any way to the pandemic response. I assume what that means is that
Time-wise.
Time-wise, yeah.
I did ask that clarifying question.
Oh, you did?
Yes. And once I explained to her, we do have a specific end date that address that.
Oh, okay.
If that's your understanding, Mr. Geren?
Yeah, so Doug's saying yes. Okay, thanks Doug. So, Mr. Geren, I think that covers everything, does it, Madam Mayor? Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. So, Mr. Geren, if I could ask a question, it's my understanding that the Attorney General sent out a legal opinion late Friday night that had a different point of view on what local health departments could do under a different statute. Have all councilmembers seen that? Perhaps you want to address that?
Yeah, I can certainly try to do that. Communicable Disease Statute 252 and 25202, it really addresses the powers of the state health department and in 25203, it addresses the powers of local health departments. What was struck down was the ability to enforce 25202 at the state level. And after, you know, meeting with court counsel, you know, hearing, you know, from Wisconsin Counties Association on reason, you know, we were advised that a challenge to 25203 would likely result in a similar decision. And so the guidance that we've been provided is you can issue an order, but if you don't have a communicable disease statute, it's referenced directly in your local ordinance, that presents a problem and you cannot include any criminal penalties. And so we can include, you know, forfeitures, but not criminal penalty. And being that our order did include that from the DPH template, we were advised to pull that and really, we communicated with other health departments that are in our region and decided that, you know, we should probably just do this all together and try to keep things consistent and clean, you know, throughout our area and eliminate as much confusion as possible. I think the important thing is that, you know, rescinding the order was only a rescission in terms of, you know, our ability to enforce it or, you know, to avoid it being contested for leaving that language in place or being contested about the ability to enforce it. Not that anything in that order, you know, was pleasant sound. So we're really, we're in the same place that we were before. All of the items in that order, all of the recommendations and guidance that we've provided all remain the same. You know, the disease remains the same, we're still in a pandemic, the, you know, the number of people in our community that are infected continues to grow and we're not changing course on how we make recommendations for the community. Now, this does, of course, you know, it does open things up, it does accelerate the timeframe in which businesses may start to open without, you know, any concern about being in violation with that order. We still feel it's premature for that to happen, but we know that it is going to happen. And so in recognition of that, we will provide the best guidance that we can and all the interpretations. that, we will provide the best guidance that we can and all the interpretation that we can to help them do that safely. We do expect that opening up now will result, you know, in more cases. And we're shoring up our resources in terms of contact tracing, surveillance, making sure that, you know, we're ready to go with, you know, isolation and that sort of thing in response to that. And so, we'll do the best we can to protect the community and provide that guidance. But this, what this really means is that, you know, it's, this moves beyond, you know, a public health response, you know. And it really already has. But this really makes it abundantly clear that this is a community response to this right now. And it takes all sectors of our community working together and following the guidance to keep this from getting way out of hand and being even worse than, you know, had we kept things the way they were.
As I understand it, the UW Milwaukee School of Freshwater Sciences has been receiving samples from MMSD Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewer District since February. And they're expecting to release some data as a result of this sewer sample testing of the shed virus within the next couple of weeks. Hate to speculate, but I'm curious whether or not the health departments around the state have been looking at doing that beyond Milwaukee so that a preventative or a targeted tracing or something like that, should that be available outside of Milwaukee and then, let's say, over the summer? Because it's my understanding they've been able to detect cases before they've been tested and documented. Is that something the region has been looking at?
Yeah, it's, that's not something we've looked at yet. And it's not something that's been offered potentially as a service to us yet. There's definitely potential value in, especially in areas that maybe they haven't been impacted yet or had cases to let you know that it's circulating. Or if, for some reason, we find ourselves in a situation where there are no more cases, that may say, hey, you know what, it's still here. We should probably, you know, still be careful, even if we're not picking up cases on a regular basis. And as the, as the science evolves with that, it'll hopefully become better. And it may, you know, allow us to see things like, you know, how prevalent is this? But right now, we just don't, we don't know, you know, how much viral shedding is occurring, how long viral shedding occurs after an infection, enough to, you know, send something in and get a result and say, yeah, you know what, in this population of, you know, 67,000 people, we would estimate that X percent, you know, are infected right now. So, certainly interested in understanding that more. Right now, in terms of its usefulness today, it's, you know, we clearly have cases. We clearly have spread. I don't know that, right now, that's going to be able to tell us what percentage of our population's been infected, you know, accurately. But, you know, we're certainly willing to help participate in the research and development of that, of that, you know, that technology as it moves forward.
So, it's my understanding the way that they're, in which they're able to do that is through the biobots that are actually collecting samples in the sewer systems? If that were to be something that was made available, would, I guess, would the region, the regional collaboration of the health departments recommend to cities that we invest in those biobots if the science backed it up?
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to work with, you know, you know, the wastewater treatment, you know, on that and, you know, try to help interpret maybe something of what that comes out of that. Frankly, I don't know enough yet about it myself to comment a whole lot more.
It's my understanding it came out of the opioid tracing, and they've been able to use it successfully with that for...
Yeah, it's definitely emerging science and may help you into, you know, help you find or understand things that are in the area if there are, until the ways to test for it.
Is there anything else you'd like to share with council that the county will be considering in relation that we should be prepared for?
Definitely, you know, we're trying to work on this as a region as much as possible. We're not going to come back right out and issue orders again here after we've issued them and they've been, you know, withdrawn just because we don't want to take the community on a roller coaster. You know, we want to provide good, sound guidance that people can understand, that we, you know, will continue to work on the tools that we need in order to, you know, intervene if necessary. But the whole point of the guidance and the regulations that we have is that, you know, we want people to follow them. And ideally, they do. And we don't need to use the tools of enforcement in order to make that happen. But, you know, we have those rules in place because we know. If we don't impose speed limits, people are going to drive however fast they want to, and they may not always exercise the best judgment. So...
So, are we calling them rules? Are we calling them guidelines?
Right now, I would say that we're calling them guidelines. Because, you know, rules, I guess, inferes that there's an enforcement mechanism built into those rules. There's not. I mean, there are other tools that we have available now. In 25203, mask gatherings, you know, with, you know, issuing some emergency orders or, you know, working with court counsel additional injunctions to work with businesses. I mean, there are other tools that we have. This was obviously very clear and specific to COVID-19 and safer at home. And so, now that that's gone and businesses have begun to open up, it's, you know, it would be challenging to very rapidly put into place what was recommended, you know, by the Attorney General and our Corporation Counsel and then reissue new orders. And I just think that's, you know, it's going to be really disruptive for, you know, for the community as well. And so, in the meantime, in short of that, we'll continue to monitor the situation. We'll provide guidance. And if the need arises that we need to take, you know, more steps to protect the community, then we'll certainly do that.
What would be that intervention threshold?
I think we'll be, we'll be learning on the way what that is. Clearly, if we're seeing a ramping up in cases and we're able to identify, you know, why that's happening, we may be able to put in some specific intervention in place. And ideally, you know, treat it, treat where the problem is, not a general blanket order. But if we cannot, and it's just community-wide transmission, and the only way to slow that down is to go back towards a safer, some type of order, you know, we'll certainly look to recommend that in the future.
So, would that be cases that are hospitalized cases because we know that they're ramping up testing? So, we would kind of expect that we would see an increased number of cases because we weren't doing as much testing? So, would it be like hospitalizations, deaths?
Yeah. Some of the best data that we have right now in terms of, you know, how this is progressing in our community is the number of hospitalizations. Because it's not something that's limited. You know, testing's been limited. As we do more testing, we will get more cases. We can certainly look at the percentage of positive cases as well, which, if given the same number of tests over a period of time, you know, you can watch that percentage. In the situation we're in right now, you know, there's a lot of attention on that. But the numbers of tests that we're doing is going way up. And it's, you know, less specific testing. So, I would expect the percentage to go down. And so, I don't think right now, while we're ramping up the numbers of cases, or the number of people being tested, that that's really the best indicator. So, you know, going back to that hospital data is definitely one. Looking at the numbers of outbreaks that we're having and following with businesses and long-term care facilities and nursing homes, those are good indicators as well. And so, we'll be focusing on those and with other indicators that we're hoping to develop a little bit better with our healthcare providers, you know, including metrics that have been in the Badger Bonds Plan.
Councilmember Muggerhour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of questions regarding too late last week. Obviously, Wednesday afternoon, Supreme Court ruled Wednesday evening, actually, let me back up. Let me ask a question first. You're the Public Health Director for Winnebago County. You are, you are in charge of public health for this county, correct?
For the areas of this county outside of Manasha and Appleton.
So, if you issue an order, do you seek guidance or approval from the county executive? Or do you do so based upon your authority as the Public Health Officer for Winnebago County?
Well, ideally, in guidance, you know, in consultation with, you know, the Board of Health, County Executive, our community partners. You know, we try not to act in isolation. I don't think that's anybody's best benefit. In the case of issuing the orders, they were issued under my authority.
Okay. So, I question, I guess, I wonder what happened between Wednesday and Friday of last week? Because as the timeline shakes out, Wednesday, Supreme Court rules in the afternoon. Wednesday evening, the DPH template, the copy and paste document comes out from them saying, here, if you want to issue local orders, copy and paste. That evening, the county executive goes on record with a newspaper and says, I'm going to paraphrase, it's unlikely that the county would impose its own safer-at-home order. Actually, I'm quoting because I think the state's order being struck down, people wouldn't be receptive of an order from the county. Then Thursday morning, you issue a safer-at-home order for Winnebago County in addition to Odagame County and a few others surrounding us. So, I'm wondering what changed his mind between Wednesday night and Thursday morning. And then Friday morning, you're on the radio supporting and defending the order you issued. And not just a few hours later, rescinding it. Trying to figure out where the lag in terms of legal guidance was between Wednesday evening and Friday morning at Winnebago County in terms of you authoring and issuing that order. And then legal counsel or corporate counsel saying, you shouldn't, we shouldn't do this because it's not legally enforceable. Trying to figure out what happened at Winnebago County in 36 hours.
Yeah. Same thing that happened in a lot of other jurisdictions. County Executive and I, when he, you know, first thought there would not be an issue of an order, we hadn't had a chance to connect. We had connected in the morning. He connected with the media, you know, later that morning. And it indicated that we likely would do that. We did in the late afternoon, issued that order. And then, and that was, that was based on a template that DPH had provided and that we had consulted with the three counties and five health departments in this region on, agreed that that was our best option to move forward. And four of us did that. The, later that day, or the next day, I'm losing track of time here, you know, the recommendations, you know, there was a, Wisconsin Counties Association held a conference, you know, Von Bresen provided input. And based on that input, court counsel started to talk. And the following day, they largely recommended that because of the enforcement piece or not, what they feel might be a challenge to the non-enforcement ability, that in order to reduce the county's liability and not have this, you know, be a situation that we just went through with the state, that we rescind that order. And so, we did that. That was the last thing we wanted to do, but we understood why.
So, you made a mention before about the roller coaster and not wanting to put the people through. But that's exactly what happened over the course of two days last week. We can all agree or disagree on what the Supreme Court ruled and what the legislature has not been doing and not fulfilling their obligation to the full state. But you mentioned that you don't want to put them on a roller coaster. But the county health department did just that last week by not making sure that it had all its ducks in a row before that order went out. And I know you take that seriously. We do. But going forward, that has to happen. That you've got to make sure you have the authority to do something, that you have, that you've gotten corporate counsel's input, that everything is actually in a row, that you can do it instead of tagging along with Odagame County and following the DPH, doesn't need, you know, Secretary doesn't need in their, in their, their template orders. Because it caused more confusion. It created more questions than answers. And it's just not what should have come out of our county.
You know, I appreciate what the county did. They, I appreciate that you did what you thought was best with the information you had at the time. And did I understand that it was Corporation Counsel that came in after the fact and said, well, wait a minute, we might have a liability? Was that from the Wisconsin Counties Association or from the local county corporate counsel?
Yeah. You know, our Corporation Counsel and city attorneys around the area, around the state all participated in, you know, a webinar related to this. And, you know, what they said was, you know, we can issue orders. And there was nothing wrong with us issuing orders, just that they felt that there was a risk of 25203, if challenged, being interpreted the same way as 25202. And then, subsequent to that, the Attorney General's opinion came out, you know, that helped try to clarify that a little bit. And so, we know that, yes, we can still issue orders. And the orders were doing fine. And if we would have said, you know what, we'll just rescind, you know, section, was it 17 or 18 that had enforcement in it, they would have just left them the way they were. But, you know, because this is an issue that's affecting all of us and it's not just the city of Oshkosh, and it's not just Winnebago County, you know, we met with, you know, our counterparts. We had a conference call with all the health officers and their legal staff in Odagame, Winnebago, and Cali Mountain Counties to discuss the issue and what the best steps were to move forward. And, you know, and that's why we made the decisions we did. You know, court counsel helped us put the orders together. I mean, it's not like they weren't involved in the process. It's just that nobody expected that interpretation to come out of a conference call the following day that really put everybody on edge and asked them to, you know, to step back. And some communities did not. You know, they said, you know what, we think we've got enough in our current ordinances to not step this back. And they didn't. But, you know, I trust my corporate counsel. And I trust, moving in a situation like this, I trust moving, you know, in step with our community partners because, you know, our geographic lines are pretty blurry for a lot of our community. And we want them to have consistency, you know, whether they're in Oshkosh or in Grand Chute.
And I would just add, Madam Mayor, you know, Mr. Geren is the director for the whole county, which, of course, we're a large part of that. But he has to be responsible to the cities of Dina, Village of Fox Crossing, along with all the other townships in Winnicott County and Amro. So, everything that we would say is a unit, he has to take into consideration. And then he has to take that opinion along with dozens of others' opinions and thousands countywide. So, it's not a pleasant position for him to be in at this time. And we work, we literally talk on a daily basis. And we have some lively discussions because we're challenging each other to make sure that we're serving the public and managing this. And this is not pretty, as Councilmember Muggerhour pointed out. So, we're going to keep talking. We're going to disagree some days. And we're going to work on lockstep in others. But what happened in the past week was not fair to public health overall. And I think that's why we got here to today. And we're doing the best we can. I think Councilmember Ford's resolution that he introduced kind of says, well, we got to figure this out. Now, to Councilmember Ford's credit, he wrote it before all this. I think it was, which, where were you in between all this stuff? It was probably Thursday morning.
The order was still in place until the 20th at that time.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. That's what it was. So, we're kind of, we're working as best we can under the circumstances we have. And in 24 hours, that answer might change. I just, that's a bit cynical, but it's reality.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah. Yeah, time's kind of standing still right now. I was in my house at the time, though. I'm always in my house. You mentioned that hospitalizations is a nice indicator or good indicator of where we're at in terms of progression.
COVID-positive hospitalizations.
Hospitalizations.
Yeah.
I noticed just on the very helpful email updates you sent out, that you have hospitalizations listed for the state but not for Winnebago County. Would that be added? I mean, if it's, I think it'd be helpful for the community to have that.
Yeah. There's a link on our situation report that goes to the Wisconsin Hospital Association. It's probably the third link down underneath the charts of numbers. And that's the Wisconsin Hospital Association site. If you click on that, you can see, you can see COVID hospitalizations for the entire state or by region. And so, you click on Fox Valley, you can kind of see what the trend is for the Fox Valley region. That does not include Brown County or Fond du Lac, which are the two, you know, two of the larger numbers of cases around us. But that does give us a sense. And then, you know, I can additionally go look and, you know, and try to look by, you know, by hospital, you know, how many cases are in a hospital at any given time. But that's, you know, that metric is a good one that if you just, you know, click on Fox Valley, and it'll give you those numbers.
Are we not able to get that by county?
No. Right now, the, those results are only summarized by what's called our Hospital Emergency Readiness Coalition region. They are available at the individual hospital level in a... They are available at the individual hospital level in a more detailed report. What the Wisconsin Hospital Association does is takes that, takes that regional data and trends it, which is even more valuable because in, in the EM system that we get that, that data from, you know, I can see on any given day or look back on a different day, but they trend it over time, which is the most valuable way to look at it.
To the extent that we could get that front and center, I think that would be appreciated. I think, I think businesses and residents, they're interested in what, what the numbers are. And I just think that would really help with, with public confidence if, if that's an important metric that that's readily accessible to take.
No, I appreciate that comment. I think as we, as we try to, we transition from, you know, Badger bounce back at the state level to more of a local level approach, we're going to be able to, we'll be pushing up some more of those, that regional, local numbers so that we're making decisions not at the state level but the local level.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, we should appreciate you coming and sharing and letting us ask questions.
My pleasure. I, I, you know, this is obviously a very important issue and we want to be accessible and we want to make sure that we're, you know, here to help provide good guidance and also receive feedback that's going to help all of us. So I appreciate your feedback.
Is there anything that you can give us for feedback that would be helpful to you beyond our, our resolution? Is there, what can we do to be supportive as well?
Yeah, you know, I think the best way to be supportive is, you know, and I, and I think Councilor Ford mentioned earlier, you know, that this isn't just a public health issue and this isn't just an economic issue. You know, we're all in this together and to the extent that, you know, you can help the community follow the guidance that's in place, take a look at some of the processes and rules that you have, like, you know, permitting special events and, you know, how do we, how do we discourage mass gatherings or how do we discourage, you know, those opportunities from coming up that may create situations that aren't good for the spread of disease in the community? You know, I think if we all look in, you know, in our, in the realm of what we have under control as, as a council or individually, that there's opportunities for all of us to positively influence the outcome of this. And, you know, so making good decisions, you know, remembering that, you know, when I'm at work, you know, I, you know, I feel pretty safe at work. And I, there's a lot of people I work with that get it. We stay spaced apart, but, you know, I tell them, what we do outside the office is really, really important, you know? The last thing that we want is, you know, is someone feeling like, you know what, they had a, they had to visit grandma or the grandkids or, and, and bring that back into our office and, you know, and infect others. And it's what we're starting to see in workplaces or we're seeing somebody that's infected in one workplace and their spouse works at another workplace. But really, the behaviors that we have outside of, you know, of our workplaces, you know, trying to minimize that, that extra contact with people that we don't know, staying in those small groups, you know, those are all really important. And to the extent that, you know, you can provide your advisement, you know, for the community in, in terms of, of following, you know, those safe distancing guidelines and, and hand washing and, you know, making things available outdoors, which is great. I mean, it's a great environment to, you know, to try to help people stay safe in. You know, our biggest, the biggest enemies we have right now are indoor environments, you know, and in these congregations, like things like workplaces. You know, those are the areas that we really need, you know, where people spend lots of time. It's not just the, you know, the, you know, you hear the six-foot, 15-minute rule. It really, I mean, that's fine if we're just sitting in an office, but it's not fine if, you know, you're talking to somebody, you know, only two feet away for just a couple of minutes or you got to raise your voice because it's a loud work environment. There's a lot of challenges and there's a lot of transmission that occurs and every situation's a little unique. And that's why we want to, you know, be available for, you know, providing guidance where we can and then be able to be responsive to those, those workplace questions or outbreaks.
If I could just ask one more technical question on the contact tracing. So it was my understanding, I don't know, a week or so ago that the state was hiring an additional 200 contact tracers. But was the state hiring them and dispersing them out to counties or was the state giving authorization or financial consideration for counties to hire additional? And what number of contact tracers are we at and what's our goal?
Yeah, that's a really good question. The state, you know, it came out early on and said, we're going to hire 1,000 contact tracers. Well, I think they meant that we needed to have a workforce of 1,000, you know, between state and local public health. You know, how many we actually need is really going to be based on how many cases there are. The more cases are, there are, you know, that we can identify, the more contact tracers we're going to need. We have a CD team of one supervisor and four nurses right now. And we have mobilized at least 12 staff that are doing contact tracing. We've hired back temporary staff that have retired. We have a contract with the school district to train up their nurses and we have a, and we're in the process right now of hiring more. So we'll, we will continue to hire contact tracers to try to address this. Our goal is that we can, we can contact every case within 24 hours and that we can be in, in touch with their contacts within another 24 at the most, hopefully less. The faster we can respond, the more we can contain things in our own community. So that's going to be an area of continued need. There is, are still decisions being made in terms of funding related to that. I know that we'll be receiving some additional funding from the state in preparedness and, and we're repurposing our internal staff the best we can. I mean, there's not a lot of regular public health work going on. You know, we've, you know, we've, we've got most of our workforce working in COVID some one way or another right now.
So would that number increase with the fall return to classes, given several thousand students could potentially be coming back in August?
With?
The number of contact tracers?
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll continue to, you know, adapt and adjust to how many we need based on numbers of cases. And, and at some point, we can refer to the, to the, to the state if we need to, but we're going to have to fall behind in order for that to happen.
City manager?
It's not related to this, but before we go, I just wanted to let council know, you know, departments have been working through reopening issues and specifically with the summer onset coming. Mr. Maurer, our parks director, has been working with parks directors throughout the area. Doug had said something about, you know, he's been working in concert with his colleagues in other communities. We're doing the same thing and Mr. Maurer will be coming out with some, some interim plans about what we're planning to do for the summer. Now that things have been loosened up a little bit, we still need to do that balancing act that Doug talked about. And there's going to be some expectations about, especially when school is officially out, that kids are going to be out and about and we're taking a look at all of our facilities and what we're going to do. We're going to, anything we recommend, that Ray's going to recommend that, that we do is really going to be about being consistent with our other folks and a lot of it's going to be, if we open something up, it's going to be used at your own risk. So I just wanted to let you know, you'll be seeing some of that in the next day or two because we do need to get that out so the public is aware of it. Because in a couple of weeks, school is officially closed and the kids are going to be want, they're going to want to be let out.
Yeah, I think I heard a rumor that the basketball backboards are back up.
They're not back up, but that's, you're, you, that is a valid rumor that you've heard. I don't know if they've actually done it yet, but they're in the process. But we got to deal with restrooms. How are we going to deal with that? Because that, you know, we know that that's a, a tough one, but I don't want to, I didn't want to get into all the detail, but I did want to give you a heads up that it's coming so that when you hear those things, we're going to put something out officially so people are aware of it. You'll be hearing that soon. That was all I had, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and I'll just hopefully leave you with this final word then, you know, those orders are gone, but nothing else has changed. You know, we should still be following those safe practices. You know, we're not saying, you know, things should get opened up. You know, we're not saying we should have, you know, graduations in person. We're not saying we should have, you know, public events or festivals or any of that stuff. It's, it's, we need to keep the same course and maintain, you know, our vigilance on, you know, on that distancing and, and help each other out.
To that point, one of the lines that I've been telling staff has been the Supreme Court ruling did not cure coronavirus and we have to keep that in mind. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess I'd just like to share how appreciative I am of all of the businesses that have been working together and supporting each other in creative ways and packages. It, it seems like the, the thing that made me really proud of Oshkosh in recent years has been our ability to be resilient. And so our resiliency obviously is being tested further and we got a little bit of that muscle and, and I think, I believe that we are resilient enough to, to get through this. And thank you, thank you for everyone's input and thoughtfulness.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Nothing further? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mayor Paul Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Pashal. Sorry, I, I don't have the screen on over here. I just see you over in the distance.
Sure. My question is actually for Mr. Roloff. Now that we've passed 2208, what is the public relations aspect of that? Are we going to be sending out some type of press release to the community and just letting those businesses know that we've made this change?
I think that that's an appropriate thing for us to do. I think that's going to be an ongoing thing. To the degree new things come up, I think the one, part of the reason I wanted to mention what was going on with the Parks Department, we have to get that out. Mr. Davis specifically regarding the, the temporary use permits, we've already been in contact with the Tavern League and the CBB. The CBB really is the best conduit to the restaurants, so we're going through that route. Mr. Larson is on the state restaurant board, so that's where we got some of that from. So we'll be, we'll be hitting social media and all that, but our primary outreach to the businesses is going to be through the CBB and the Tavern League. And they're already aware of it. I'm sure they're, they were watching everything council was doing this evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Ford?
Second.
Second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.[1787.13][1787.13]